Good evening, everyone. The City of Marine City Virtual City Commission Meeting is called to order on Thursday, February 4th, 2021 at 7:00 PM. Can we please have a moment of silence to send our positive thoughts and prayers to those in our community that need our support? Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioners, when I call roll call, if you could identify where you are, please. Commissioner Bryson.
Here in the City Marine City, County of St. Clair.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I'm here in City Marine City in the County of St. Clair.
Commissioner Callahan.
I'm here in the City of Marine City, County of St. Clair.
Commissioner Clausen.
I'm here in the City of Marine City, County of Michigan.
Commissioner Kreidler.
I'm here in this City Marine City, County of St. Clair.
Commissioner Ross.
Present within the City of Marine City in the County of St. Clair.
Mayor Verkaman.
I'm here, City of Marine City, County of St. Clair, Michigan.
City Manager Levin.
I am here as well, Marine City, St. Clair County.
Good, thank you. We need to approve the agenda. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda, please?
So moved. Commissioner Callahan.
Support. Commissioner Ross.
All right, we have a motion and support. Now to public comment. Anyone is welcome.
We have to vote on the approval of the agenda.
Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Commissioner Kreidler.
Yes.
Commissioner Ross.
Yes.
Mayor Verkaman.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right. Public comment. Anyone is welcome to address the City Commission. Please state your name, and they need to say their location, too, correct?
No, they don't.
No? Not even Marine City, Michigan?
No.
Please state your name and limit your comments to five minutes. City Commission will not respond, but we will follow up as necessary. Anyone? I need to approve some minutes, so we need a motion to approve the City Commission meeting minutes as of January 21st, 2021.
So moved. Commissioner Kreidler.
Support. Commissioner Callahan.
This is Hendrick. I have one item on page eight. This is in regard to the cameras. Can you change that where I say Commissioner Hendrick stated the fire department was also looking into the cameras and would bring, change that to, I would bring the fire authority decision to a future meeting?
Fire authority decision?
Yeah, to a future meeting.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, I need a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan. I'll come back to her. Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Commissioner Kreidler.
Yes.
Commissioner Ross.
Yes.
Mayor Verkaman.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
You there? Okay. Motion carries.
Thank you. Moving on to the consent agenda. We have items A through D, which is the historical commission meeting minutes from July 16th, 2019, the pension board meeting minutes, October 27th, 2020, retiree healthcare meeting minutes, October 27th, 2020, and CED, which is the Community Economic Development meeting minutes, October 28th, 2020. I need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
This is Jake. I'll make a motion. We approve the consent agenda, letters A through D.
Support. Commissioner Kreidler.
We have a motion and support. Any discussion? And we need a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Commissioner Kreidler.
Yes.
Commissioner Ross.
Yes.
Mayor Verkaman.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Motion carries.
And moving on to financial business, I need a motion to approve expenditures, including payroll, for $186,000, $186,043 cents.
This is Commissioner Callahan. I make a motion. We approve financials, including payroll, for $186,043 cents.
Support. Clausen.
Okay, we have a motion and support. Anybody have any questions, comments? All right, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Commissioner Kreidler.
Yes.
Commissioner Ross. Mayor Verkaman.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, moving on to unfinished business. We have City Manager Evaluation Resolution Number 002-2021, and our city attorney, Bob Davis, will speak on this. Bob, are you there?
Can you hear me?
I can.
Oh, great. Okay, so based on our meeting last round, I altered this with your wisdom to make it so that there's a process that goes on in June, July, and a process that goes on in November, December. The same theories remain the same. I think it was a wise comment that you all made because, you know, just setting some goals in November and going a whole year may not work out to our best interest. But again, the concepts remain the same, so we would do what we're going to do in each annual November, December process, and then we would revisit the resolution in June, July, amend, modify, enhance, delete, whatever has to be done mid-year, so that the city commissioners are in touch with their policy direction and their goals and objectives twice per year. Again, folks, this doesn't mean that, you all have been around long enough to know that in any given day, you know, something comes up and it requires immediate attention and it becomes the focus, you know, for two or three days. So this doesn't mean that we're excluding all of those types of issues. It just means we're going to have some general policy directions and some overall lofty goals in place for our city manager, and we're going to visit that twice a year. And all we need to do tonight is really pass the resolution that puts the process in place, and then we'll bring back the necessary documents to implement the process.
This is Lisa. Bob, so are you going to seek input from all of us when you create the next set of documents?
Yeah, the next set of documents will just be the format that we use to obtain and document your, two times per year. So let's just say, Lisa, you know, we're at some meeting in June, getting ready to look at perhaps amending the resolution in July. You know, we would want to hear from you. What issues have come to your attention from your represented public or in your role as a commissioner that, you know, you would like to see, you know, moved up the ladder a little bit or enhanced a little bit? Or perhaps you can report on something that has been very well accomplished and we can get it off the list and replace with something new. So we'll have a process for that twice per year.
Okay, so when, so you're saying you're going to create another set of documents? I understand all that, and I understand the review, but where I'm getting at is when do we create all the goals and whatever for the start?
And we will do that this July with the process starting in June.
All right. So everybody should keep track of things or do whatever you're going to do so you don't wait till the last minute in July, and then you've got to try to think of something.
Nope. Start your thinking now, and like we talked, this is a great process to keep you thinking.
Yeah, I just don't want it to fall on the wayside today, and then nobody thinks about it, and then June comes around and then everybody's going, oh, crap, we've got to come up with a, you know, you know what I'm saying?
Nope. I understand.
Elaine, do you have any input on this?
No, I'm good with the process.
Well, we need a motion then to approve the resolution that puts this process in place.
This is Jake. I'll make a motion. We approve Resolution Number 002-2021.
Support. Brian Ross.
Okay, we have a motion and a support. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Kreidler.
Yes.
Commissioner Ross.
Yes.
Mayor Verkaman.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yeah.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, moving down to Resolution Number 004-2020, utility bill deferment. Elaine?
This is an extension of something that we have actually done a couple of times, and this is waiving the late fees for utility bills. As you can see from the memo, it's been renewed a couple of times, August 20th and November 5th. Megan, our treasurer, provided a little bit of information about the economic impact that this decision is having, and right now what we're doing is looking for a decision moving forward, what it is that we're going to do, if we are going to just resume normal operations effective in March, or if we want to continue this resolution through May or move it to some other specified date. If you do have any other specific questions, Megan is on the line for you.
Hi, Megan. Can you talk a little bit about, can you talk a little bit about this deferment and what happened or what happens with, like, the difference between 2020 and 2021 and the, how much it's changed?
Well, the biggest change is that you have no penalties, obviously, because of the economic situation we have going on, and also we're under moratorium consistently, whether it be from the federal government or the state government or both, that are prohibiting any form of shut-off. So there's really a couple of things just to clear up. First, if you guys want to extend the penalties, it obviously will cut into your quote-unquote "revenue" because we will be extending it for another three months. You have gone a year and three months without any kind of penalties for late bills. The city can withstand that financial decision. However, what we want to take a look at, or what I'd see clarity from the board, is if they're going to continue with doing shut-off when they're allowed, if people can't commit to some kind of payment arrangement and stick to it, and second, if they are going to continue with putting the delinquencies for water usage as of December 31st, 2020, on the tax bills, which is per the city charter, which I would recommend. Does anybody have any other question?
So Megan, I have a question.
Oh, go ahead.
Sorry, Megan, I got a question. So when you say the city is willing to make payment plans, I mean, when I get my utility bills, there are, like, many, many state and federal programs available to help with utility bills, and I would assume that our water bills are included in that. I mean, when you say that the city is willing to make payment plans, I mean, like, what type of payment plans are we talking about when someone is, like, heavily in arrears?
Well, I think that's kind of guidance that the board would kind of need to direct where we want to go as a whole. Obviously, there are people out there generally struggling, and you are correct that there are options out there. However, for miscellaneous reasons, a lot of times, like DHS, or excuse me, the Department of Health and Human Services, depending on what information is provided to them, they could very well deny somebody assistance, especially if they've had assistance before. They have all kinds of qualifying factors. So I think it's really just, do we want to set an amount of your balance? You have, just as an example, you have, you split it amongst five payments, and as long as you make those payments, then, you know, we're okay. This is just a hypothetical example. It's just something I want to recognize. The city has been, in the past, worked with people many times on, you know, trying to help them out with a payment arrangement in the form of not shutting them off. They still had their penalties accruing on their bills. Obviously, they're not right now, but they would work with them as long as they committed to a payment arrangement to not shut them off.
So with the $53,000 balance that we have on these accounts, if they continue to not pay, is that going to increase everyone else's water bill?
I don't think that necessarily, could it indirectly impact it? Yes. Do I think that's really the big determining factor? No. No, for when we do rate increases. But, you know, if the amount grows and grows, yes, the city will have to do something because they have to pay for all the services to provide the water and all the chemicals, the staffing, everything that goes along with it. That's not going away.
Sure, it could have effect on the rates, not necessarily the transfer of what's owed to somebody else's bill, but it would affect the rates overall. Right. I mean, to me, if somebody's just trying to make a payment, you know, I mean, if they're showing that they're, you know, they have goodwill and that they're attempting to, you know, bring down their bill somewhat, you know, each month, that's a good thing. But to just let it go and not make any payments and continue going into arrears, I mean, that's when I think that we have to make a change or take a stand.
Yes, and we do have both situations. Some are being very responsible, making the payments that they can, and we have others that haven't made a payment in nine or ten months, and our hands are tied.
Well, what's happening here, Mayor, is that, you know, another hand of the government makes it very clear you're not going to get shut off, just like landlord-tenant law. You know, there's a clear signal to tenants, you know, you're not going to get evicted. So how do some people react to you're not going to get evicted? They react by saying, well, I don't have to pay my rent.
This is Chris. I'd like to speak on this for a moment. We have had recent luck with the deputy clerk, spending a lot of time calling these accounts, getting landlords in here to make these payments, and a lot of them have been very receptive to that and responsible, so we will continue doing that, and we will be making payment arrangements for anyone that wants to work with us, and as long as they abide by the arrangements made. We haven't shut off in the past. But we've never worked with these large figures either before.
This is Lisa. I got one question. It says in here, too, you guys, it says the city charter dictates that water bills be rolled in the tax bills. So at the end of the season, then, if nobody pays on them, and you haven't heard from anybody, then you're going to roll it onto the taxes?
It's actually all, any kind of special assessment, they get rolled on there, and the reason why I'm discussing it now is because we have to run the report. Usually, we run them in April to bring to the board the entire list of any kind of outstanding weeds, snow removal, anything of any kind, I think, water bills, sidewalk assessments, all those things have to be brought to you by June so that they can go on to the tax bills. So it's not water, speaking only on water, water usage is for, anything that would go on a tax bill would be for usage, not paid for, that was in December 31st, 2020. It has nothing to do with anything from January 1st.
Okay, that's why I wanted you to explain that so that everybody's real clear out there that hears this, that they understand how this works. Thank you.
Just for one additional bit of clarification, this is Commissioner Ross. That is to say that the amount owed would end up going on to the total tax bill for the city, in other words, distributed about amongst all of its residents, or go on to the tax bill of the resident whose dues are in arrears?
It goes on the resident's tax bill whose dues are in arrears only, has no effect on anyone else.
Okay. Thanks.
Anyone else? Questions?
This is Commissioner Kreidler. I just did quick numbers here, and it looks like the year before, the average would have, in arrears, would have been $260, let's say. This year, with the 116 and that $53,000, their average would be $457. You think that's, you think that's pretty much across the board, like, or are some of these water usages a lot higher than others? Or, you know, I'm just wondering how far behind these people actually are on an individual basis.
They're all different.
Oh, yeah, go ahead. Sorry, Chris.
No, they're just all different. You know, some owe a small amount, and some haven't made any payments, as Megan referenced a few minutes ago.
I see. I see.
Yeah, well, we have, you know, we can do a couple of things here. I mean, we can extend the deferment, we can, obviously, the late fees, we can waive the late fees and the water shut-offs, which resume in March, have the late fees and the water shut-offs resume in March, move to extend the existing resolution, maybe to May of this year, 2021, and that would give, you know, as it says, that each section, three billing periods without penalties being applied, and then we can move forward with putting the delinquencies on the tax bill, and then we can move to extend the existing resolution through another specified date. So I need some input on that.
Can I add one quick thing, Mayor, on that second option?
Yeah.
So again, this doesn't mean that all 116 accounts will get moved on to the tax bills. We will rerun a report in April to see how many are left, and only those individuals will get put on the tax roll, just for clarification. If they pay their amounts due by that time, it won't roll on to their tax bills, is what I wanted to add.
Okay. All right. Well, if we could get a motion to approve the resolution, and we need to just decide what we're, you know, what we're going to do with this motion.
Mayor, I was going to just ask if you wanted to elaborate more on your proposal to potentially extend until May.
Well, it's...
Commissioner Ross, by the way, sorry for not stating my name.
Yeah, no, I get, you know, it's in our paperwork, you know, we moved to extend the existing resolution through May of this year. That'll give each section three billing periods without penalties being applied, and as a part of this, we'll move forward with putting delinquencies on the tax bills.
Got it.
That was the second option.
Yeah, so these are not altogether, it's separate options, yeah?
Mm-hmm. I mean, the way I look at it, like I said, you know, we are willing as a city to make payment plans, but you've got to show an effort to make the payment plans. I mean, even if it's $20. And, but, you know, you're always going to get those that, you know, once they get a get-out-of-jail-free card, they're going to take it, right? So, man, there's so many programs out there to help people make payments. I'm kind of leaning towards extending the existing resolution through May, and because we know we still have a lot of people that are struggling and on unemployment and that kind of stuff, and that'll give plenty, people plenty of time to get their finances in order.
At least a bit of an extension, yeah. I would agree with that sentiment, I think.
Yeah. Okay, so I need a motion.
This is Commissioner Callahan. I make a motion to move to extend the existing resolution through May 20th, 21.
Support.
Okay.
It says May 7th, on the 7th day of May, is that what we're sticking to, or the end of May?
Through May.
Through May, so the last day. Okay, I got a motion and a support. I need a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Ross.
Yes.
Mayor Verkaman.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Commissioner Kreidler.
Yes.
Motion carries. I have one further question to ask of the board, if I could. Each time we've brought this to you, I asked you if you would like me to bring this back prior to May, or is this something that you think you might want to end, or?
I would bring it back, be evaluated.
Okay.
Agreed, yeah. I wasn't sure if it was directly to the mayor or to the commission as a whole, but this is Commissioner Ross, and yeah, I'd agree, whatever meeting is prior to the end date.
Yep. Thank you for your input.
Okay. Good. Moving on to unfinished business, item C, which is the demolition bid at 209 West Boulevard.
Well, everybody has the information before them for the bids for demolition of 209 West Boulevard. Obviously, this has been going on for quite a while. The fire occurred now pretty much a year ago, and we've been patient in trying to work on this within the office, and there were some requests of the homeowners that had not been fulfilled in the past. They appear to be on the line. If you have any questions or want to give them an opportunity to speak prior to making a decision.
Hi, this is Brandy Jasper. For whatever reason, my husband wasn't able to log in for the meeting.
I'm in now.
Okay. Go ahead, you can talk, Cor.
So I've been communicating with the restoration company, and they were having an issue with the insurance company as well in getting the rest of the funds, so they weren't willing to start the demo. The first thing I seen about this demolition was... The first thing I seen about this demolition was two days ago. And within the two days, we withdrew from the rebuild and I pulled all of the Forsemco and DTE certification letters to do the demo. And I have the bid also here with me. The contractor tried to get ahold of Tracy Selick today to try to figure out what the holdup was. I guess to avoid having you guys take care of all of the work, we are just gonna demo it.
This is Commissioner Hendrick. So what are you saying? You're now gonna demo it yourself, or?
No, a company.
Well, that's what I mean. You're, you're hiring a company to demo this now?
I, I feel like my hands are tied because it's being pushed to be demoed by the city, so that's...
Well, it's because we've been waiting so long, we're a year into this now and we haven't heard anything. And we need to get this resolved and so that's why we finally took action to start getting it done.
I understand. My, my builder has been communicated with Tracy. I don't know who else I'm supposed to reach out to. I thought Tracy was the main contact for all of the work.
Madam, Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Could I just ask a question? You, the, the homeowner indicates that he just learned about the demolition two days ago. How, how did he learn about that?
I can answer then. This is Chris. I mailed a certified letter as well as Brandy and also mailed it regular postage. And we found out today, we looked and saw that Mr. Jasper had refused to sign and the letter was, the certified letter was sitting at the post office in New Baltimore. And Brandy's was in the midst of going to be delivered. It hadn't been delivered as yet. But obviously, they must have received their regular mail.
So did, did, can I ask the homeowners, did you get the, the letters regarding demolition?
I have not received anything yet.
I received the one in the mail and I, and I sent an email and text to my wife. So she had a copy as well, but I never, didn't sign or refuse to sign. I had a notice on the door that said that they missed me.
All right, so, so the, the good news is, is that you received the letter and you emailed it to your wife. That, that's all. I just wanted to make sure you had notice.
Yes, two days ago.
All right, thank you.
So, Mr. Jasper, I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
So your intent is to do the demo yourself and then your intent is to rebuild the property and then inhabit that property?
No, it'd be demoed and backfilled and seeded and put on the market.
So just the property itself, because you said you had a builder? Or I got confused because you said you had a builder, a contractor that was gonna build the house. So that's why I was confused.
So originally, that's, that was the plan. The insurance company that we've been dealing with apparently was out of office for three months and couldn't cut the rest of the check for the builder to start building. Tracy gave them the permit for the restoration, but because they didn't receive the funds from the insurance company, then it's reached this level.
What would be the timing of your, what would be the timing of your demolition?
Soon as we can get the permit.
Bob, can we put a, a date on that? Can we do some kind of a date? I mean, I know the permit's not gonna take that long. Can we do, I don't know, 30 days, 60 days?
Well, yeah, I mean, I, I, I'm just glad they got the notice of, of our, of our demolition. We've already, we've already gone out to bids. I would suggest that the city move forward with selecting its bid or, or, or at least narrow it down tonight. And then give the homeowners a very limited window to get the demolition done on, by themselves, at which time our contractor would be ready to do the demolition.
Yeah, I have to agree with that. This is Lisa. This has taken so long and it's gone on so long and I've gotten fielded so many complaints on this. We need to make sure that this is gonna get done and it doesn't, we get told something and then it doesn't happen again. That's my issue with this. That's why I'd rather proceed with this one.
Okay. Well, I need a motion to, so I just have a quick question again for Mr. Jasper. Sorry, I'm going, I'm thinking about this while I'm... So I just want to make it perfectly clear because we have, we have a, a bid here to, to do the demo on the city's, on the city's bill. But you, you say that you're gonna take care of the demo and you're gonna get that done in a timely manner?
Yes, I, I talked to the insurance adjuster, her name is Lori Carroll. She's, I was waiting to speak with you guys. I talked to her yesterday. She said she will expedite some of the holdings for the demo to get done. I believe she's holding back funds because of the emergency demolition that the city is kind of withholding. So it, it, I feel like it's just been a lot of miscommunication in a sense. And I'm sorry, I, I understand. I mean, with the pandemic and, and everything else that's been going on, we didn't even get the permit to build until two months ago. So we're, I, I promise, I, I'm trying to make everything right by every means. I already have the SEMCO, I had the line cut off for gas. I had the, the lines cut off for DTE. The only thing I need to get is a certification letter from the water company, the Marine City Water Company, for them to accept the permit.
Okay, this is Bill Fawcett in the building. I'd like to find out, is your guy ready to start now? What's the date of start for your demo?
Whenever the permit is, is issued. I'm, yes, he's, he's ready to go.
The day of the permit issue?
I mean, I'd like to give a day or two, you know, to prep everything. But yeah, I mean, he's, he's, he's sitting on call waiting for this job.
So if he's ready, if he's ready to go, then the minute you get the permit in your hand, he should be able to start that day.
But if not, then we need to move forward. Like, like Bob says, why don't we approve this pending his date? And if nothing happens on that date, then we move forward with this guy.
Right. I agree.
I agree with that.
So I'm gonna need a, a motion to approve the resolution and then we're gonna have to make an amendment and give Mr. Jasper a, a short window to accomplish the demolition, which should have been done a long time ago.
Okay, so I'll make the motion. We approve, I don't know if the salmon bean trucking to take care of the bid at the cost of $24,881, pending the fact that unless the homeowner gets his permit and starts demolition as soon as possible. But if not, then this takes over.
Let me, let me, let me offer some, some, some comment on that motion.
Go ahead.
I think we should, I think we should give the, the homeowner a defined window.
I agree.
And I, I would suggest that the permit be obtained and demolition be completed within 30 days or our contractor will execute the demolition forthwith.
On the 31st day.
All right, I'll amend my motion this.
In the morning, in the morning on the 31st day.
At 8:00 AM on the 31st day.
We approved this bid and we give the homeowner 30 days to get his permit and get this thing down. And if it doesn't happen within 30 days, this takes over. Is that all right?
Support.
Okay, we have a motion and support. I need a roll call vote, please.
Mayor Verkaman?
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson?
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan?
Yes.
Commissioner Claussen?
Yes.
Commissioner Kreidler?
Yes.
Commissioner Ross?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, Mr. Jasper, do you understand, you understand what just happened, correct?
Absolutely. You guys accepted the $24,000 bid. And if it is not carried out within the 30 days, the 31st day, you guys will manage it from there. Now, a quick question. Who else can I try to communicate with to get this permit filled?
You can call the city offices and anybody can help you. I mean, obviously Tracy's our, Tracy's our building official. But we will make sure that that gets expedited.
Okay, I mean, okay, I just, it, it's twice a week, half days that I can get in communication with him and get my builder up there to, to pull the permit. I just, I, I don't want that to hold me up in my delay process.
It should not hold us up on our end. I, I'm sure the city manager can talk to the building official and we can expedite this process for you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I believe he can fill out the application and send it in and, and insert it on it right away. Send your application in.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving on. New business, we have the Friends of City Hall, the request for repairs.
Hi, everybody. This is Judy White.
Judy White.
I am the president of Friends of City Hall. I'm going to apologize in advance if my dog starts barking because sometimes she gets upset when I'm on the phone. She has the mentality of a two-year-old, so. I had sent a letter to Mayor Verkaman and, by the way, congratulations, Mayor, on your election. I think it was wonderful.
Thank you, Mrs. White.
The letter contained three requests and let me run through them quickly. Number one, there is a evergreen tree in the south yard of City Hall that lost its top years ago in a very strong storm. And that tree has proceeded to suffer and I think it's carrying some kind of a disease as well. So my request is that that tree be removed and the stump ground out. And in thinking about that, I talked to some people in town, including some people from the garden club. And they concur with us that that tree ought to be removed. I simultaneously brought up the fact that there was a tree in the north yard of City Hall. A little more difficult to identify to you over the phone. But at any rate, this tree is very tall and it has several very large branches up high in the tree, which are dead. My fear is that one, at one point, they're going to fall. Garden Club is not too enthusiastic about just cutting that tree down. They want it examined before anything happens and I think that's good. So I'd like to encourage the city to look at the trees, take the one evergreen down and maybe get an arborist to look at the other tree. I think I would like to meet with whoever that is so I can point out the tree that I'm concerned about. The second thing that I had written about in the letter was to request that the city do some small external repairs to City Hall building. There are some small places that need some tuck pointing repairs. And there are places, particularly on the east facade of the building, where some caulking needs to be replaced. And we're getting some chipping and cracking paint largely around the first floor area. And again, it's worse on the east end of the building. Those repairs are small right now and shouldn't be terribly expensive. But, and I would encourage the city to take care of that certainly by spring.
Mrs. White, can I have a question?
Yes.
Can you send an itemized list of these repairs instead of trying to explain them in a letter? Like do an itemized list to the city manager? And then, you know, we'll receive the list here in the city offices and then, you know, obviously we can meet out there, the city manager and some of the other department heads can meet out there and we can look at the repairs.
I think that's, I think that's an excellent approach.
Yeah, same, same with the, I'm sorry, same with the, the trees, you know. We can, we can get an arborist to look at there because, look out there because we're certainly not tree professionals, so. And then you wanted to talk quickly, you wanted to talk quickly about the bandstand?
Yes, that was the third point I wanted to make. The bandstand is in bad shape. There's an awful lot of rod in it. The stairs that lead up into the bandstand are extremely dangerous. I don't think people should be using the stairs. I, I don't think they should be using the bandstand at all. I know right now probably no one is. But a couple of different groups have approached us regarding repair of the bandstand. It may require extensive repair, it may require demolition and replacement. And the only way we're gonna be able to afford this is if we roll the cost of that into a capital campaign devoted largely to raising the money for the elevator for City Hall. I just wanted to inform the city of where we stand on that and our willingness to work on it. I just wanted the city's support on it. We'll certainly work with the historical commission and do everything appropriate, in other words, according to, to period, the building itself.
Well, we, we certainly love the bandstand. I think that that is such a signature mark for our city. I love the location of the bandstand. Unfortunately, it is in disrepair. I've been by there numerous times. I met with a contractor there not, not too long ago. And therefore, there's tape on the, caution tape on the stairwell so you can't even go up into the bandstand. And I remember, I remember driving by the bandstand years ago, seeing somebody getting married there. And I thought it was the coolest thing, so. But, you know, we've had people look at it, cities, Mike Gettrich has looked at it. I personally think that we need to demolish the whole thing, you know. Because sometimes you start getting into these repairs and it's, it's so much better just to build a new structure that'll maybe a little bit larger of a structure so you can actually fit a band on the bandstand and then, you know, go from there.
Well, that would be actually more accurate to history as well because the original bandstand was significantly larger than what stands right now. My personal preference in rebuilding is to use vinyl products.
Oh, totally, yeah. Yeah, like a nice steel roof on the top of it would look great. And, you know, but the whole thing, like right now, I think it, it kind of comes into a safety issue and we are using that area more and more. We've got the ice rink there, we're doing the, the Fire and Ice Festival this weekend. I certainly don't want to see that tape come down, you know, in the wind or whatever and have somebody try to walk up there and then go through the floor, so. Anyway.
Well, it's my intention to begin working on that and I, I'm glad to have your support on it. There is one other thing that I just wanted to mention briefly. I had sent an email to you and to Elaine requesting a meeting because our architect has come up with pretty much finalized drawings for interior work on City Hall. So I just wanted to mention that and hope that we can come up with a meeting soon.
Okay. All right.
And that's, that's it. Thanks so much. Thanks so much, uh, for your time. I really appreciate it.
Thank you, Mrs. White. Anybody have any questions for Mrs. White while she's still here?
No, this is Bill Clausen. I'm wondering if, uh, has our building inspector looked at that? Did he say that it's, um, that it's unstructural or our engineer?
I don't believe it. Are you referring to the bandstand?
Yes.
Uh, not to my knowledge.
Yeah, this is Elaine, not to my knowledge either. I know that Mike took a look at it and I was out there with him on the site as well. And, uh, some of those handrails are not, uh, fully affixed anymore. And the steps and wood are in pretty bad shape.
Yeah, it, it might be, um, a good idea just to take the stairs right off of the thing right now. So there just is no access.
Well, if you're going to do partial demo, you might as well do a full demo.
Yeah. If you're going to do a demo, I think you, uh, you have to get it, uh, demoed by the building official.
Well, I think we also have to, um, get an okay from the historical commission.
Okay.
So, um, the, the, you know, there's a little, a few more steps to it. I, I would also not really want to tear it down until we've got our act together and we can do advertising and signage and what have you to let people know, yeah, we, we're tearing it down, but yeah, we're going to replace it and we're going to do a great job with it because people are extremely fond of that building. Uh, the mayor is completely right. So many people have been married in the structure, you know? The emotional connection to it is really strong. So we want, we want to take care and not to offend people.
Right, no, I get that. But, you know, um, my only concern is that if it is a safety issue with somebody, some kid running up on those stairs and, you know, falling through or getting hurt or leaning against the railing and whatever, um, uh, we need to, you know, make a decision fairly quickly then if we're going to, if you guys, if you guys want to raise funds, then the, the first part of that then should be, you know, to do a demo on that bandstand.
All right, I would suggest then, uh, if we're going to proceed on that, then we have a sign ready to go that announces what we're doing and encourages people to, um, contribute.
Right.
Well, maybe we can talk about that in our, um, our meeting regarding plans for City Hall.
Okay.
And I'll come up with an itemized list on the other items.
All right, thank you. Does anybody have any, um, other questions or comments for Mrs. White? Friends of City Hall? Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Good night.
Thank you. All right, moving on to, um, pension board. We have a, uh, vacancy that we need to, um, to fill. Um, I, I just have a question. Commissioner Hendrick, are, are you, um, you asked for the, the minutes on this meeting.
Yep.
Is this something that you can attend? I mean, it's four times a year.
Yeah, it's only four meetings a year, but yeah, I, I've been trying to keep up on some of the stuff going on in there. So, yeah, I'd take that on.
I asked, um, just so you know, I asked, uh, Commissioner Ross too. Um, he's got some work conflict at that same time, so. Um, but that, that's always a possibility in case you can't make a meeting or, you know, whatever, so.
All right, that's fine.
Okay, well, then I need a, a motion to appoint, um, Commissioner Hendrick to the, um, pension board.
Commissioner Ross, I'll make a motion to appoint Commissioner Hendrick to the pension board.
Commissioner Callahan, support.
Okay, we have a motion and a support. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Commissioner Kreidler.
Yes.
Commissioner Ross.
Yes.
Mayor Verkaman.
Yes.
Motion carries. Can I make a correction though, please? We already have an alternate on the pension board and it's Jake Bryson.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Didn't know, okay. Uh, moving on to the SEMCOG, um, we needed to appoint, um, a city commissioner representative. I talked to Commissioner Kreidler, um, and he is willing to jump in if someone wants to, um, make a motion to appoint her.
I'll make that motion to appoint him. This is Hendrick.
I'd like to second that motion. Commissioner Ross.
All right, we have a, uh, motion and a second, um, to appoint Commissioner Kreidler as our city representative for the SEMCOG. Um, so I need a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Commissioner Kreidler.
Yes.
Commissioner Ross.
Yes.
Mayor Verkaman.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, now we're moving on to the master plan update. Uh, Elaine?
The master plan is a document that is really managed and, uh, created by the planning commission. They have been working on it diligently for, eh, probably the last year or two, um, working on some updates to it. Uh, this is something that gets sent to the city commission to authorize the distribution to neighboring communities and other entities for a sixty-three day comment period. Uh, once this comment period is done, all of the information goes back to the planning commission for a public hearing and consideration. After that process and everything is complete, they will forward a recommendation back to city commission for ultimate final approval. So just what we're looking for today is to authorize the distribution of the plan.
So it's not to look over the plan? I didn't note, this is Commissioner Ross, apologies. Firstly, is comment allowed?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, just checking. Um, yeah, I looked over some of the comments that I had made as a planning commissioner and just one of them had yet to be realized. So there were some comments to replace a few of the outdated pictures and, uh, update some other things. All that got done. The only thing that I noticed that still remained was if people would refer to page two dash two, table two dash one. Give you a second to get there. So if you look through the, the table, it has the twenty-ten census column, the twenty-fifteen ACS column, and then the percent change. And just as one example, if you'll look at the census in Marine City from twenty-ten to twenty-fifteen has reduced with a number change between twenty-ten and twenty-fifteen of minus seventy-six. Now look at Clay Township. It shows an increase of two-hundred-and-ninety, but nine-thousand-sixty-six is a greater number than eight-thousand-eight-hundred-and-ninety-eight. So that doesn't check out. What I, I mean, I just charted it briefly. And, uh, basically from Clay Township down is incorrect that I can tell. St. Clair County listed as the exact same amount. So I just, is this the most important thing in the world? Perhaps not. But what it says to me is that it's inflating area townships that are actually in the same boat that everybody else is. Uh, and it's incorrect. I mean, just, we shouldn't have incorrect data in our
Right.
uh, plans. Again, is this the most critical thing, you know, to the master plan? Not at all, but I, I've read this thing through it with a pretty fine tooth comb and just wanted to make sure all the i's are dotted and t's are crossed, so.
I will get with the county and see if we can get an updated table. Um, I'm not really sure how they got this because this was something from when we originally did the master plan. So I don't even know if they'll be able to recapture these numbers or do the table because I think it's kind of cut and paste in there. But I'll see what they can provide us in, for replacement for this.
We're copying and pasting a mistake from a mistake.
Yeah.
In a different paper. I, sorry, that was, that sounded blameful. It wasn't intended to be at all. All I'm trying to say is we, we were fed this data and we're regenerating it. Uh, but I personally feel bad about that.
Sometimes you can't rely on numbers, can you?
No, numbers never lie, that's the problem.
Numbers do not lie. All right, anybody have any other, uh, comments about the, um, master plan update?
Um, this is Lisa.
That I have done, it's beautiful.
The only thing Elaine is, says here, so if you want, if we have any comments, then we give our, what do we send this to, Joe Moran from the planning commission? So he can feed it to the rest of the board if we have any issues?
That would be the easiest way to deal with it, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Anyone else? All right, I need a motion, uh, to authorize the distribution of the plan to neighboring communities and other various entities for a sixty-three day comment period.
So moved, Commissioner Callahan.
Thank you.
Can we make an pending investigation of the table? I apologize. Bill seconded it.
An amendment of the table?
Or at least an investigation to explain why it is the way it is.
Okay, do you need me to amend my motion?
Would that be okay, Wendy? I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, that's fine.
Thank you.
Um, I make a motion that we, um, present the master plan for a sixty-day review period, um, with the review of the data on, I'm sorry, where was that?
Two, two.
Page two dash two.
Page two dash two.
Table two dash one.
Yeah, right, and it's a sixty-three. It's a sixty-three day period.
Sixty-three day period, yes.
Thank you.
Yep.
Second, anyone?
I'll support it again, Bill Clausen.
Thank you, we have a motion and support. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Commissioner Kreidler.
Yes.
Commissioner Ross.
Yes.
Mayor Verkaman.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, moving on to the city manager's report. Elaine?
Over the last week, budget worksheets were dispersed to the department heads. I also had a department head meeting. Uh, I attended a webinar that dealt with the redevelopment-ready communities two-point-oh, uh, new format. And there'll be information coming out of that probably in the next several months. I also met with the subcommittee, met with the contractor over at two-sixty South Parker so that we could make sure we're all on the same page with the plan over there. And we should be getting a contract soon for commission review and approval. I met with High Tech for a quarterly update and have the new contract. I'll be taking a look at that and making sure that everything is okay. I attended a MML finance webinar. And also been dealing with the flooding here in our office in Marine City. And, um, fortunately, we have our basements all cleaned out for the most part. So there wasn't really any damage down there, uh, except for really just a lot of, uh, dirt and debris that has come in. The DPW did a great job on trying to take care of much of, as much of the problems throughout town as possible. Obviously, the, the point has had some serious flooding. St. Clair County has issued a, uh, emergency for the whole county along the river regarding the flooding and the tributaries. If there are any issues with people that have damage, they can report that to the St. Clair County Emergency Management. They will be the authority that will be collecting any information and working with the state and federal government for any, uh, financial assistance in regard to that. Also wanted to just mention that we did have one employee that had a positive COVID test. So we are dealing with that. Uh, we tried to open the office with issues and things that are going on. We did wind up closing again, but we are making it available for people by appointment. So if for some reason there is a hardship and somebody does need to come in the office to deal with their business, we'll be glad to let them in for an appointment. That's all I have.
Okay, anybody have any questions for city manager?
Elaine, was, was that the guy's center? Sorry, this is Commissioner Ross.
Yes, it was, was the guy's center.
That you were speaking of, the ba-, yeah, basement down there, understood, yeah.
Yeah, we have a, a loading dock down there. And then, uh, the water level came up so high, it flooded around the loading dock and then came in the door. Um, DPW did a great job, got out here, they moved a lot of dirt and, uh, put some sandbags out, shored things up. And fortunately, the water has gone down. I'm sure everybody's probably heard that there are four icebreakers in the area that are dealing with this issue. So hopefully we'll get it taken care of and, and start to really see the water receding again.
Yeah, Elaine, uh, Bill Clausen, I was just wondering if, uh, the, the, the office hours are there, but people can drop off applications and bills and everything in a Dropbox right in front?
Ab- absolutely, you know, we have office staff in here every day answering the phone. They're going out pretty much hourly and checking the Dropbox. Uh, we do occasionally have people that are stopping by and conducting some business. For example, I had High Tech here the other day. So businesses occurring, we're doing really everything that we have done. It's just that our doors are locked.
Yeah, I mean, people think just because the door is locked, they can't drop off. And it's all the units are doing that. And they've got Drop boxes. And people have to understand that the Dropbox is there and we are getting the information. You just have to put it in there.
Correct.
Elaine, I just have a quick question. You said that someone in the office tested positive for COVID. Is that, it's someone that they knew tested positive for COVID?
No, an, an employee tested positive and is off on leave.
Okay, I misunderstood. Um, anybody else? Okay, thank you. We're moving on to, um, commissioner privilege and the liaison reports. We're going to go alphabetically again. Uh, Commissioner Bryson? Have anything? How are things at the ferry?
Uh, we just started running this morning, so it's cold and wet, or cold and frozen.
Yeah, but a frozen lane's a good lane. Commissioner Hendricks?
Um, I guess I'd just like to thank the DPW for the hard work during the flooding incident. Um, I'm sure this isn't going to be the last for this winter's over. Um, and it's supposed to get bitter cold, so everybody kind of watch out for next week. It's going to be miserable, or more miserable, I should say, and that's all.
Uh, Commissioner Callahan?
Uh, yes, I also, I, I want to thank the DPW for the work that they've been, that they did, um, you know, trying to keep us as dry as we possibly could, um, as the ice was rolling in. And, uh, also I do want to, um, bring up that, uh, the Marine City, the Chamber of Commerce has the Marine City, uh, Fire and Ice Festival going on at three-hundred Broadway this weekend. Um, you know, things will start up probably about one o'clock and we have all different kinds of events. And I think it'll, it's, it's, it's going to be chilly, but you know what? It'll be fun, so just come on out and, uh, enjoy the fun. Um, other than that, that's it.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Clausen?
That's the, uh, planning commission, uh, did, uh, has canceled their meeting. They really didn't have anything on the agenda. Uh, the same thing, everything is, uh, good. It's just, uh, things need to slow down when we get this ice stuff. And if people wouldn't want to run down there and look at it and try to touch the ice and do that stuff there, uh, they would be out of the way of the, um, people that are trying to pump water and do stuff down there to clear it. So just try to be safe.
Thank you. Commissioner Kreidler?
I have nothing at this time, thanks.
Thank you. Commissioner Ross?
Yeah, again, thanks for all those who helped with, uh, the flooding downtown and just blessings to those who are affected by it, especially down on, uh, Catholic Point there. And, um, I'd, I'd, per Bill's recommendation, uh, have stayed away from, you know, the most affected areas. But just having to drive up M-twenty-nine, you could see all of the houses right there on like Point Drive and the other areas in East China. It, it was on, had to be on their first level. I mean, it had to have been water inside and it's just terrible. So my heart goes out to them, that's all.
Yes, I, I've been told that it's the worst, uh, it came up so quickly, um, and that it was the worst that they, people have seen since nineteen-eighty- Yes, I, I've been told that it's the worst, uh, it came up so quickly, um, and that it was the worst that they, people have seen since 1984. When we were all wee children. Okay.
And it was the other record flood. Yeah. Sorry.
Yeah. Yep. Okay. I also just wanted to mention real quick before we sign off or go, or actually go into closed session, um, that we are, uh, the chamber is, uh, doing the Fire and Ice Festival. It's this Saturday, which is the sixth? Is it the sixth?
Yes.
Yes, the sixth. And it's from one to six. Um, there's going to be a taste of Marine City, a couple of, there's several restaurants going to be participating. Um, from two to four, you can come or as long as the food lasts. Um, and there's a lot of cool things happening, um, in the cold that we have, uh, some, uh, fire artists or fire dancers or I forgot what they're called, but they, they, they do a lot of acrobatics and that kind of stuff with fire. We've got some professional skaters that are going to be putting on a little, uh, skating demonstration. There's live music. Uh, so bundle up and come out, you know, you don't have to come out for the whole time from one to six. Um, but come out and support for an hour. There's going to be 50/50 raffles and also a lot of, um, great baskets to raffle off, uh, from different, uh, businesses around town. I saw some of the baskets and they looked, uh, pretty full and, and good. So come on out for an hour or so. Um, I'm going to be doing my second mayor minute in February. I'm going to be doing that, actually, uh, meet with, um, Paul Dingeman on Wednesday, February 10th. So it should be out, um, shortly thereafter. I'm going to be discussing, um, phone scams and personal scams. Um, it is the season. Um, I've had so many of my friends talk about their parents, uh, elderly parents, um, getting the phone calls, uh, people trying to get valuable information from them. And I think it's, uh, it's worth talking about. Um, and also be updating, uh, more on some city news. Um, and that's it. Can I, um, I need a motion to adjourn. We're going to, well, actually I'm sorry. We, I need a motion to enter into closed session. Sorry.
Bill Clausen to make a motion to enter in closed session.
Brian Ross, support.
Okay. We have a motion and support. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Commissioner Kreidler.
Yes.
Commissioner Ross.
Yes.
Mayor Verkaman.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. Good night, everyone.
Hey, is it pointed, I'm going to ask the all people that are not commissioners to, uh, go into the waiting room or disconnect?
Okay. We are now, um, back in open session from the city commission meeting. Uh, we were discussing a, uh, grant that, uh, the city has received, um, from the Christopher and Dana Reeve Foundation. Um, we were awarded, um, $24,706 to support the Mariner Park Waterfront Accessibility Project. Um, just to let everyone know in our city that there were only 50 of these grants given out. Um, and Marine City, uh, received one of them. Um, major, major kudos, uh, to, um, our city office worker, Michelle, um, for, uh, writing this grant and, um, uh, she's like one of our, one of our excellent best grant writers. So kudos to her. Um, so the purpose of this grant was to do some sidewalk work around Mariner Park. And, um, that work, Elaine, do, do we have any idea when we're supposed to be starting that? Like the summer sometime?
We'd be starting in spring.
Yep. All right. I need a motion to, uh, move forward with the grant.
This is Commissioner. Go ahead.
Okay. Commiss-, this is Commissioner Ross. I make a motion to approve the grant in the amount of $24,706 from the Christopher and Dana Reeve Foundation for use in Mariner Park.
Commissioner Callahan, support.
Okay. We have a motion and support. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Ross.
Yes.
Mayor Verkaman.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Commissioner Kreidler.
Yes.
Motion carries.
And thank you, Michelle.
Yes. Thank you, Michelle, big time. Um, and I need a motion to adjourn.
Bill Clausen, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Callahan, support.
Okay. Have a motion and support. Uh, roll call vote for adjournment.
Mayor Verkaman.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan. Commissioner Callahan. Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Commissioner Kreidler.
Yes.
Commissioner Ross.
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Motion carries. Good night, everyone.
Good night, everybody. Thank you. Great meeting. Thank you.